Good evening. It is Monday, July 20th, 2020, 6:30 PM. This is a Carney Board of Aldermen meeting. Call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you had a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everybody is present, and you have a floor.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Board in front of you, you will see the consent agenda. Any questions or discussions on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we remove these three from the consent agenda and move it to old business so that we can have further discussion on this item.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? We will move items C3 to old business. Any other questions, discussion on the consent agenda? If not, can we entertain a motion to pass with the approved amendment?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda without C3.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Jim, do you want to take role since there-
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
And Alderman Berger?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to Mayor's report. I do want to communicate and to the board and our constituents that Commerce Bank was a little bitter on our 2020 certificate of participation refunding. The total interest cost was less than 1% at .907, 503% interest. So we did get a better interest savings than we anticipated of roughly 215K a year for approximately $34,000 per year. As we discussed previous meeting, Jim and I were involved with Piper Sandler and Todd Goffey and Gilmore and Bell and had a really good call with Moody's Ratings. And I'm pleased to see that, you know, this rate term refinancing to that debt, so we're not obviously extending out our debt, really just the interest savings cost was quite substantial. So I appreciate Jim working along with our vendors, Piper and Gilmore Bell, my direction to get that done. So, good savings for the city. That concludes the Mayor's report. We'll move on to the Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would like to report that while most of our capital projects remain on hold, as we feel our way through this COVID-19 pandemic, the Dogwood Side Rock project is being put out for bid. Funding for this project will come partially from existing funds restricted for street projects, not projected revenues, and the $185,000 grant from Moda. We're hopeful that they'll pay in favorable bids and maybe it'll help, you know, send a light to us to move on with some other things. But it's early in the game on this COVID thing. I am really hesitant to recommend taking some of these things off. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. There are no public requests and petitions. We do have a public hearing this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a public hearing has been scheduled for the Board of Aldermen to consider a request for a conditional use permit for Sparks Investment Group. Enclosed is a staff memo from David Pavlich explaining the proposal for the old residential structure at 100 East Main to resume a residential use in a commercial zone. And after a public hearing was held on July 13th by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the permit. It is recommended the Board consider the enclosed proposed ordinance on both readings at the conclusion of this evening's public hearing. The applicants are in attendance by Zoom and can be recognized if the Board chooses. However, David, is it appropriate to give a staff report?
Jim, did you say that you want me to give a staff report or just provide some comments?
That would be good, comments.
Okay. Yeah, there is a staff memo that explains the application. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval unanimously at their meeting last week. This is a similar process that we've done in some other places in town, including a building owned by Wayne Rickel down by the fire station and a building over by the railroad tracks on West Washington Street. This is a former house. The zoning code does allow a conditional use permit for use of an old house, zoned commercial, as a single-family dwelling unit. Staff recommends approval per the P&amp;Z recommendation.
Thank you, David. At this time, we will open up the floor for any public input or comments. If you are for or against the proposed application, have you state your name and address for record? Have the floor open? There's nobody in City Hall moving? Anybody joining via Zoom or telephone? Have any questions or comments? See nobody move? The floor is closed for public comment. At this time, we'll move to Board discussion. Any questions, comments from the Board? Kathy, our Planning and Zoning representative, do you have anything else to add?
I don't.
Okay.
Kathy, did he say anything about what they want to do with the vacant lot beside it? Because there is another lot there. He just briefly mentioned it, but, I mean, are they going to build on it? Is it going to stay vacant?
Alderman Holt, I can comment on that. They purchased the lot that has the house. The vacant lot next door was not purchased. It was retained by the previous owner.
Okay.
My only concern when we met with this for planning and zoning was that parking lot and what would end up being in that parking lot. But they're able to use that parking lot. But David said that they could do, you know, a trailer with a boat on it or things like that. They wouldn't be able to use leave commercial vehicles there, but there would be like probably anything else you would see in a residential area.
All right. There being no further questions or discussion from the Board? Can we entertain a motion by title only? The ordinance, please?
Mr. Mayor, the ordinance is, I think, we'll put it on screen share. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit at 100 East Washington Street allowing a single-family dwelling in a C general commercial district.
Make a motion to approve as read?
I'll second that.
All right. Jim, can you take role, please?
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Berger?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor. Second reading?
By title only, please.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit at 100 East Main Street allowing a single-family dwelling in a C general commercial district.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Take role, please?
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Berger?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations, Shane. And I've already noticed some work done to the property. It's looking really nice, so I appreciate you investing in Carney.
Got two thumbs up.
All right, great. We'll move on to old business. We did move an item off the consent agenda to old business, the resolution amending the Republic Services contract. I'll let Jim talk on that a little bit, and then I know for sure I have some comments and it sounds like that the Board does as well.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed is a revised resolution amending the bulky item pickup provision as we had talked about to provide for large appliance pickup. Citizens would be permitted two scheduled pickups during the calendar year. One pickup per resident will be permitted commencing September, this September, for the balance of the year. And so, large appliances would be permitted with refrigerants disallowed. Again, one great advantage, the citizen initiates the pickup request directly with Republic at the citizen's convenience. Also, they have the ability to place 10 39-gallon bags of waste material, which greatly expands the opportunity for waste material disposal. Another advantage, we are in the eighth year of a 10-year contract. We will have time to determine if this is successful and should be continued. And we recommend approval as a staff. We do have Zoom, or we have Zoom utilizing a connection with Hank Potts who can answer any questions the Board might have.
Great, thank you. You know, I shared my concerns and questions at our last regular scheduled meeting. I did reach out personally to the City of Liberty and spoke to Mayor Britton. They are the only other municipality that I'm aware of that swishes this. And Mayor Britton corresponded back to me via email today and mentioned that most folks do like the flexibility of setting their own pickup date. They pretty much have eliminated any complaints about out-of-town people, you know, cooling through stuff at the curb at all hours of the night and making a mess. There were a few complaints, but they haven't heard anything recently. And they, overall, Mayor Britton communicated that he thinks that Liberty citizens like the new system much better. So that's the only additional research that I had completed since the last time we discussed this topic. With that, I'd like to give the Board the opportunity to ask any additional questions of Hank or share any opinions or feedback that you may have received from your constituents.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I have talked to a few people and they were very concerned about the five items. I don't know if there's a way we can expand that a little bit. I tried to explain to them that the, we had asked a question about patio furniture, three pieces of it. Is that considered one piece or is that considered three? On those type of things. And I said, well, you're really going to have to call them. The big concern is they don't know if five items is enough. That maybe it should be 10 items or seven items, I don't know. But five, they thought was too small. That was my concern, but I got his feedback.
I concur. I had quite a few in the last two weeks because this has been commented about. And five is just too small. And with two years left on our contract, there was some pushback. So, we need to up the number of items. There was also, believe it or not, there were comments about how much more might end up in our landfills because we do have the scavengers, the repurposers, the people that are out there for metal, things like that that do come through. And they take, gosh, I would say somewhere between a quarter to a half of the piles that are there. So, there were quite a few concerns that way, too. So I'm still not 100% on board with this. There still needs to maybe be a little more tweaking done.
I actually had a couple of questions. While we're being told that people can schedule this on their, at their convenience, I'm guessing that there's probably one day a week that is going to be Carney's Day. So if that's Wednesday or Friday or whatever day that is, I'm guessing that it's not at their convenience, but at a specific date. Which means, the other thing that concerns me a little bit is that we'll now have trash sitting out on curbs in a neighborhood maybe every week. It may be you this week and me next week. And the following week, there'll be trash sitting out. So, I don't, I don't know if that's something that I love. I don't know if I love that idea. And I feel like as a city, we're bending over backwards to make things really nice for Republic. But I'm not sure what we're getting back as a city? What are the benefits that we're getting? We're not, they're not saying, well, we're not going to charge you as much. They're not, or, so what are we getting as a city from?
Yeah, for picking up less and-
And working with-
Right.
So they don't have to hire more people or run the trucks or whatever. I feel like we probably are doing most of the giving on this, on this issue.
So, I've gotten several emails and actually some phone calls about this. And the biggest concerns that I've heard is having trash or bulky items out throughout town. You might have, like Kathy or Alderman Berger said, might have, you know, Joe up the street has his out this week and Jim has his out next week. And so we've got bulky items all over town every week. And there's no, there's no specific time. So, you know, everybody seems to think that this is going to make the town look trashier because the bulky items are going to be wherever. You know, the other thing I did is I have a friend of mine who is a Liberty City Councilman. And I talked to him in depth today. And he said that they have had nothing but problems with this situation. They're, they're, the residents are having trouble, one, getting into Republic to speak with anybody. In one case, this family had tried to get ahold of Republic for three weeks in a row. They have not been able to get ahold of anybody. The other thing that, it's not, it's one day a week. In this case, Liberty's is Thursday. So, I might call for my trash to, my bulky items to be gone on Monday, but whatever day Carney's Day is, it's going to sit there for that length of time. The Alderman that I've talked to said that this program has been nothing but problems for them. He routinely gets emails from people in his area that he always sends on to Hank and also his Public Works Director. And that the response is marginal at best. He said that had they known the issues that they've had with this program in the short time that they've had it, they would have never voted to do it. And that he, in talking to his other city councilmen, that he believes that there may be an amendment come out, that they go back to the ones in the spring, ones in the fall like they used to because they've had nothing but trouble with this. So, you know, we're not here to bend over for Republic. We're here for citizens. And I don't see this as a benefit to the citizens. You get less to sit out. And it seems to be more of a trouble than what it's worth, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to address the fact that it was city staff who took note of Liberty. It was not Republic coming and trying to peddle this project on us. We, as a staff, have wrestled with, with trying to get people to follow the rules. When you say five isn't enough, well, we've seen mountains of trash. I mean, literally mountains of trash. People carrying their entire swing set to the curb without dismantling and expecting it to be gone. There's a, I think, almost a deliberate denial of reason when it comes to a lot of bulky items. And what happens is, is if they can put that out, so can I. And it sets a trend before we get a chance to communicate what's going on. There are real problems here that are beyond what Republic has to face. And, you know, nine mattresses in a pile. I don't get that. I don't get a hot tub sitting on a trailer. Where did it come from? Why is it on a trailer? Well, there's abuse that goes on. And it's gotten worse over time like you've never seen. Entire decks sawed up and not bundled, not even attempt to bundle. And so, piled in loose pieces that would take a considerable amount of time. Nothing like what we used to have in years past. It's getting out of hand. We are going to face some issues here with whatever happens. So, I would like, Mr. Mayor, if we could get Hank to, he's heard all these things, I'd like, he's on and like him to address those things. But I do want to emphasize, it's the city staff bringing, taking note of what Liberty was doing. And we did hear positive things from Liberty. Of course, it was a startup program this spring in the COVID environment. So I imagine they had problems. Hank, can you talk to us?
Yeah, Hank, before I give you the floor, obviously, I hear the Board. I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to your constituents. You know, I said myself our last meeting that to me, it did sound like that, you know, Republic was getting all the benefit here. And we needed to make sure that there was benefit to the city according to. I do think it's proper to give Hank the opportunity to answer any of the criticism he may have received or commentary. I do think it's interesting at the least that the feedback we received from the City of Liberty is, I think, polar opposite, depending on who we've talked to down there. But regardless, not, you know, we'll make a decision as a Board here momentarily. But it sounds like that we have some more work to do on this. So with that being said, Hank, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I don't know if there's something wrong. For some reason, my video is not working, but I apologize for that. Let me talk a little bit about Liberty as I can see. It came up from a couple of you. We, we had some hiccups in Liberty, no doubt about it. Excuse me. And I'll try to walk through some of them, not as an excuse, but to give you the other side of the story as to what happened. We rolled Liberty out on the first of March. And I think we all realized what happened a couple of weeks later with the COVID virus hitting. We were really, in fact, even talking to Jim and Shirley at the time with your own cleanup, we put it off a few weeks because we weren't totally comfortable with the safety of the drivers and how to deal with this. Unfortunately, Liberty residents started calling. And some of them had scheduled appointments that we couldn't or didn't keep because of the COVID virus and the COVID situation. We also took a step to really protect our employees by taking our hourly staff. And instead of furloughing or laying off anybody, we cut them to 32 hours so they maintain benefits, maintain payroll, and we had them working out of their houses. And without going into personalities, let's just say the person that was supposed to be handling these calls was not quite as efficient at home as she was in the office. And yeah, we did fall behind. I personally am taking some of those calls now. And the one Alderman that you talked to sent them to me, I think, last week. Everything he gave me, other than one or two, I had called and scheduled within 24 hours. We had hiccups, no doubt. We have worked through them. We are rolling out an online form that Liberty residents can email in where we will respond within 24 hours with both confirmation and if there's any specific directions we have to give them. And we will make that same type of online form available to Carney if you vote to move forward on this. As far as the items, let me talk about the schedule. Yes, you are correct. We are looking at doing this on Tuesday, okay? It's easier to do it one day a week for the residents to get it in and out rather than having the extra truck on the street every day of the week on the pickup day. We've tried it both ways in different towns and it just seems to work better when there's one day assigned to it. We instruct the residents to put the material out no earlier than 5:00, 6:00 PM the night before, and it's gone by the end of the day. As far as items, you know, that's really a difficult item to put our arms around because we say five items on the assumption that there might be sofas out there, all right? I can clarify that better if you want. And I'm a little hesitant because to be honest with you, I don't know how to clarify it better. You know, if there were patio furniture, patio chairs, I would probably count two chairs as the one item. If you throw out kitchen chairs around, you know, the regular wooden kitchen chairs around the table that break up the kindling, those would be like three items to one count, okay? So, we can better define that issue, no problem, to make the residents feel more comfortable and to make you to feel more comfortable with it. There's always some exceptions. And I'll tell you that, you know, from the recycling point of view, when that steel gets in the landfill, they have roll-off boxes in the landfill and they will pull it and they will put it in there. Do they capture it all? Absolutely not. If it's in the middle of the load, they don't dig through it. But there are some that they do capture. And to be honest with you, most of the steel that's at the curb, we don't see it anymore because a lot of it gets shipped back to the Nebraska Furniture and everybody else when they buy the material. The amount of stuff that's at the curb has been less and less. And that's from my perspective. And I talked to several of these scrappers and I sort of let know when this sort of issue happens or this sort of timeline happens. And the scrappers will get used to it being Tuesday. They'd still probably be out there if they could. I appreciate you guys listening to me. I appreciate the chance to talk to you about this. It's an issue either way that's creating a lot of headaches because like Jim said, there's some people out there that we have picked up a pile and received a complaint five minutes later that we missed it. And we go back there and there's a trailer unloading another pile. It's, I assume, from a brother or a sister or a relative of some sort. So, there's some issues with the program as is. And personally, I think this would make it better. And again, I just thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, Hank. Any other discussion, comments from the Board?
I feel bad. I agree there is some abuse of our program. I see it every trash pickup, whether it's spring or fall. But I do believe that a majority of our citizens do stick pretty much to the rules. Maybe the solution here is to give it another six months. That would let Liberty be nine months in and we can see how-
That would let Liberty be nine months in and we can see how they are doing with Liberty and if they have improved. And I'm sure they will, but maybe we let them get the kinks out of this program in Liberty so that by the time something like this does come to Kearney, it is a bit smoother transition. And if we still have two years left on our contract, it gives us time. I don't think it's, uh, something we have to do this moment.
All right. Any other questions, discussions? All right. Can we entertain a motion, uh, to the resolution?
Are you willing to table this as I'm doing it?
I think so.
You need to make a motion.
All right. I make a motion to table this for five, six months. And then let's bring it back up and readdress it and see how things are doing in Liberty, how your connections say they're doing.
All right, board, you hear the motion to table, on the table? Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, take a role, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
All right. That concludes old business. We have no new business. We'll move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
I'm glad that, uh, we're slowly progressing and not, a whole lot of us have been ill in town. Obviously, there are a few, but I feel like Kearney has been pretty blessed with very low numbers. So I'm thankful.
All right. Alderman Holt?
Well, I just would like to encourage everyone to, uh, come up to Jess James Park in the evening and take a look at our beautiful comet. Um, there's no, uh, light distortion up there. You can see the stars quite well. And my wife and I were up the other night. And, um, if you look at the Big Dipper, go right in front of the Big Dipper and you can actually see our comet. So, um, you don't always get to see a comet. Take advantage of it while you can. It's supposed to be in the area till the twenty-third. So, uh, you got a few more days. Go up and take a look at it. And so, um, right now, since there's no shows going on, there's no concerts going on, let's go to the stars. So go up and, uh, still use the park and, uh, take a look at our comet.
Great. Uh, Alderman Lehman?
Um, don't really have a whole lot other than, uh, some point, uh, I'd like to see the, the board, uh, take a look at, um, the request, uh, by Liberty Hospital. I've had a couple of people, uh, in my ward that have expressed concern that, that, and, and in one case they said that we denied their request. There was no action taken, so, um, but, uh, I think it warrants looking at helping in, in some form. Uh, the dollar amount that they requested was obviously not, uh, not acceptable. So, um, just something I'd like to see, uh, see us look at at, at another point, so...
Great. Uh, I'll have a couple of comments after I give Kathy time to speak. And that's gonna be one of the items I'll, I'll, uh, follow up on.
Okay.
I don't have anything to say, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, I'll end with a couple of things. I have requested, uh, staff get with our vendors and, and provide a update on the, the Splash Pad Initiative and Alliance Park redevelopment. As we know, uh, due to COVID, that, uh, has, has, uh, been put on hold. But nonetheless, I think it's been quite some time since the board has received an update. So, um, I know, I believe our next meeting is when we're gonna plan to have that on the agenda. Uh, also, after, uh, last, last meeting, I, I too did receive, uh, some communication from some, uh, constituents. Uh, it was false information out there that we denied Liberty Hospital's request. Um, one was a, a senior staff member that lives in the community. And, and I let them know that that information is false. Um, that we actually, you know, there was no action requested, uh, from the board at that point. And, uh, you know, to, to where I did receive a written request, I invited, uh, their CEO, Mr. David Fess, uh, Fees. Uh, I may have mispronounced his name, but he did accept the invite. And, uh, Jim, when is he planning on attending?
August the third. And, uh, that's when you'll also have a report from our, uh, Vireo, the, uh, Splash Pad designers.
Perfect. So, um, that same week, we, I, we connected. And he's, I, I think, presenting at Liberty and, and another city. So the, the, uh, next meeting we can get him, he was available is August third. So that'll give us, uh, Alderman Lehman an opportunity as a board, uh...
Mr. Mayor, he will attend by Zoom.
Via Zoom, okay.
Which I think is actually better if they have the video image.
Absolutely.
And, uh, then, um, last thing is, uh, Alderman Holt. Uh, I know wayfinding signs. I have not heard anything further on that from staff or that committee. Uh, so, uh, Jim?
I've been part of that. I would be glad to help move forward with that.
Okay.
Get that ball rolling again. All right. I'll get on that in the next week.
All right. Well, that concludes Alderman discussion. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.